Calling to order. Any questions? Okay. Calling to order the business meeting for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six for Tuesday, February nineteenth. Roll call, please.
Word up. Hale. Hoffman. Castle. Condella here. Walker. Yacke.
Here.
Does happen to have any comments here for the year in particular? For local purposes? I'm just saying yes. All right, please rise from the front of the chair, please.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this turn, no more before any comments on our agenda that you need. Do you have any comments? Having no comments, I view forward to the superintendent.
Any just requests or questions or concerns or comments regarding transportation, public safety, work. Okay. Knowing that our board and board members not able to join us physically until eight o'clock before we begin to do these as regular. And then take action on the items that we have listed for packing at eight o'clock for the open session, poll session. So if I were introduced, I should say, Sir Tom Sullivan from Lakeside Transportation Company. Any questions or comments to come around, Sir Sullivan, if you want to make any positive comments on anything that is like staff or something. You asked for us to meet, you will like to get more questions if you're at fault or want to make any comments.
Just to go back. My name is Tom Sullivan, I'm vice president of the contracts and bids for Cook, Illinois. Danny Mountbryke, he's our regional manager, he's with us tonight also. He oversees Lakeside Transportation. Lakeside Transportation is one of sixteen companies that are owned by subsidiaries of Cook, Illinois. We own running buses under Cook, Illinois, but we are privately held, a family business. And as I said, Lakeside is one of the sixteen operated companies. We've been in transportation for over fifty years, school bus transportation. We do run about twenty-one hundred school buses in the Chicago area, in the suburbs, mostly, the south, west and north suburbs. Been doing this a long time. Half of what we do is spending. So we've been doing this a lot of years. Cook, Illinois, nobody knows that name because we don't run any buses under that name, but Lakeside Transportation, Grandberry Transportation, Westway College, American School Bus, Kicker, Illinois School Bus. Everybody's got a different name, but it's a long story, but so we've been doing this a lot of years. And I've known Bob since she was over at Harrison Thirty-Six, we were running their buses for Harrison Thirty-Six. And we decided to take a look at this bid when it came out. That's why we put our bid in and hopefully we'll be working together in the future. So any questions concerning Cook, Illinois or Lakeside? We've been up in Lakeside, we've been in the, our two locations, we have a location in Waukegan, and then we also have a location in. And that's where we run the buses from, and we are fortunate enough to be in those. So anybody have any questions for us or me?
I have a question about your company. Why does it do continue to choose to do your sixteen companies separate? What is that?
It's kind of under, as I said, we're privately held and we're a family business. It was actually my father-in-law who did start it, but he grew. And as he grew the business, we were, a school district decided to switch from doing their own busing to, and then he came up with a name for that. Or he purchased a bus company. When he purchased the bus company, his thought was, the community knows the bus. They're familiar with the name, so they like, they know the name. A bus company, we can only service a twenty-mile area, we're not gonna, from Lakeside, we're not gonna service, you know, the south suburbs or something like that. So his thought process was, they know the name, they're happy with the name, they like the service, why choose a name? So that's the big reason.
Do you have any thoughts or worries or concerns about our particular needs for our contract?
No, I think one of the things that helped us is, is I know you put the bid out last spring. And after that, we had a couple of talks with, not only with Eric, but the other two business managers. And from there, we, we have a person who usually worked at a routing software company, and he works for us now. And we had a chance to try to work it, how the routes, not only here work, but the other two districts, to see how it all fits together. So I think with having those conversations and with having worked a little bit with on those routes, it gave us a really pretty good understanding of what the transportation is.
Yeah, I think the, the best thing that I've learned so far throughout the bid process and working with Lakeside, is that they were the ones that recommended to us some different consolidation efforts. So we currently use fourteen buses to do, you know, different tiered structure for our transportation. And they recommended, hey, if we tweak some things a little bit here or there, we can go from fourteen buses to ten and do triple tiered routes. So, you know, just that, that measure alone has saved us over a hundred thousand dollars this year. And that's something coming directly from the company. So that's something I, I think we really appreciate it and left an impression on us.
Although not everything's perfect, I believe that Lakeside is very responsive and strong partnership. They can be involved with the district as well as with the administrative staff. So if there were whatever issues, they were always very good to respond to and then also wrap up. So I believe we're in that same relationship coming on going forward.
As you said, communication is key. Well, scene does not always perfect science, but as long as everybody's communicating, everybody appreciates what's going on, that's what we do.
You're welcome, Matt. Thank you.
John, you have a question?
Yeah. Let's hear. He has never questioned right now.
And. I mean, any question?
All right.
Actually, I worry.
As well as I. So except good night.
I definitely have a comment to grab. I want to bring two and two to that. All right, next up is the.
Well, actually, same time every year, so if you update, I'm clearly are with our local higher base in the district. And we are collectively put this together, since we're responsible for all and certain parts of goals and priorities and all the targets that we have to add to capacity. We decided to each one of us kind of share a portion of it. So the first part of what you see is basically the key. So all of the academics, as you know, we are rich with academics in schools and school districts, so we just defined them for you of what each of the DLT, the LT, the IOT, the PACT, the PLT, and the NBCB, because they're infused throughout the presentation. And so if you do have any questions or comments, please feel free to, you know, ask them throughout the presentation or even wait until the end. But I just wanted to share that with you. So I'm gonna turn the first goal over to Dr. Rogers.
Hello. Our first goal is academic excellence, something that is, we are very, very special to, we work on rebuilding, rebuilding building. This year is like a lot of time focusing on social studies, sciences, and language arts. Dr. Draca has been leading teams to make progress in all three of those areas, and there's an estimated date of completion in July, to have a solid learning framework for each of those. Our next target is to strengthen our student learning objectives, the process for each target program. If you recall, a student's learning objective is basically what our students are, are working on. We take baseline data, we assess where they are before we give the instruction, then we teach. And then we reassess to make sure our students are making progress, that we expect them to see at each of those learning objectives. Third, we use that student assessment data to guide instruction and meet individual student needs. If you recall, just earlier this February, Dr. Draca and the rest of our team put together a presentation on how we use L-9 Star, MAP, and other assessments to drive instruction. And so that is something we have been actively working on all year. And our fourth goal, research and develop individual digital learning profiles for each student. That is very exciting. We're going to be taking all of that data and putting it together to have a goal of sending a profile home with report cards. That we give here as a snapshot about all the data that's collected for their child in the district. So we are hoping to have that as my, the next report card, but we do anticipate for sure having that by the end of the year.
Oh, sure, sorry, go ahead. So this is the training, really data-driven, so and that's, I'm assuming that three and four are gonna build off of one and two. Is that true?
Yes, well, they do build off of one and two, but they also are independent. We have learning objectives in math and English as well. So this is something that's been in progress. So we've been working on those student learning objectives for the past few years. And so, yes, we keep building on them, but we had a go of the other ones that we created.
So my only comment is about, point number three, it says you apply student assessment data to guide instruction and meet individual student needs. And we're saying that you are complete on that. So what I'm understanding you saying is that we're complete on implementing these systems as you do. And you're, you're going, we're in the process of using that data to drive decisions. Are we, does everyone have the data flow and the skills and they're actually using them?
Yes, for example, if you're even after reassess, remember, L-9 is our data warehouse, so that's where all of the information is stored. And we use STAR, we use MAP as other assessments. So every time we do those assessments, even if it's student target portfolio information, we do sit down either as smaller grade level teams or as building teams. We review that data together and make instructional decisions. We might decide to regroup students for math groups or for literacy groups, but we might have to go back and reteach a content. But we are actively reviewing that data on a consistent basis, not rebuilding.
This is yet when this that meeting where we all, we all presented two weeks ago, the data presentation of how we use the data by building and by class.
I'm just responding to the, that it's more than just having implemented. There is actually skill development and practice meetings, all of that, so there's a lot of that in here, it's huge. And that's wonderful.
Yes. I don't know if you've had time to review the previous presentation, but I think it was a very difficult meeting. So, yeah, it is, it is really exciting. We've made a lot of progress in the last few years, and I feel like the point, the teachers are comfortable. It's no longer, you know, my gosh, what are you talking about? I do feel that the teachers are very comfortable with assessing, that they understand that it works. I think they're excited about watching students grow, and it's a normal part of our lives at this point. And they do want, yeah.
Thank you for helping. And Mr. Wolford is next.
Yep. So go to professional excellence, optimizing professional experiences for all District Seventy-Six staff. And I want to start off by all, it's not just certificate, it's classified staff, our learning associates, our office associates, our nursery associates. So we really are trying to do the whole, the whole institution, if you will. We have three main targets in this, as you can read, enhance the operation of professional learning teams. So Dr. Draca leads the IOT and Dual Language Leadership Coaching. He really, as the associate superintendent, the person who drives this. But it's also comprised of teachers and Dr. Draca. And so they will meet quarterly, if you will, and they focus on professional leadership goals that are generated and/or areas that they need to focus on for the future. Our opening day, when we look at number two, fostering and promoting teacher and learning environments that are responsive and inclusive. So we, we really are making a better push at understanding all children who come, not just a select population. And really, we started off the year with Stan and the Own coming, and a former West Oak student Ricky, who told his story at Moonlight High School and going to college, and how he was inspired and why it made a difference. And I, you know, education's one of those professions where you don't see your rewards, you don't hear your rewards until down the road. And so it was great to bring back a former West Oak student who is really doing and shining quite well. Then just recently, another example is, we were at Moonlight High School last Friday, and Molly did a presentation. The Molly's been with us before, and we enjoy him, but it's nice to see that not only us, but the high school, that we have that same, that same drive and reflective look on our practices. And he challenges you to really be objective in looking at, are we really doing the best that we could for our kids? We think we are, but then he'll bring up another point, and you're like, I didn't see it through that lens. And it really helps look at that equity issue. So it's really positive. On the third one, when we take a look at the reorganization plan, you know, it's a big undertaking that's getting ready to go. And so the district has worked really hard with the NBC committee, the New Beginnings committee, and we just met today. And we've met several, several times each month up until now. And so the teachers themselves, also, you can see a link there, took a survey. If you'd like to look at it, feel free to do that. But really, we, we've met, and the bigger topics and areas for our staff is really looking at scheduling, logistics, the culture and climate, and then also just making sure we have good, open communications. And I think that it has eased that transitions angst a little bit, but I still think no matter what, when you reconfigure a district, you're gonna have a little bit. But I think the teachers are in a good, good position right now.
Results that's attached, it looks like it's kind of a list of considerations. This is what they said their concerns were? Is that what these lists?
So the power, the PowerPoint that Mr. Wolford's referring to, the staff surveys, we had shared with them, very many of their survey, what are your concerns? You know, and they just could write down what they could want us to kind of confirm. We categorize them as those four goals, set a criteria, logistics, what is it gonna look like? What are the layouts? Where's my class at me? How am I gonna move? What am I gonna tow? Those things. And then scheduling, what are things that happen? You know, what about starting end times? Summer schoolers, we have a lot of the school science, we have the labs, extra curriculums, we have the work, so we can have a shared space. So a lot of those scheduling issues. And then one of the things that we're most proud of, as you all know, is our culture and climate. They take such pride in, they need staff, they take pride in, they work so hard to build their current building culture. We can be principal, we can be leadership team, we can be each other, professional learning team. They really wanted to make sure that we preserve that. So what are we gonna be doing now that we're kind of combining West Oak community, West Oak Middle School, as well as now combining part of Lakeside, the secondary teachers, the American teachers? How are we gonna preserve that culture and climate and then grow by enhancing it for our new teams? So a lot of those, and then what is, is all may happen. So we combined all of their survey responses, feedback, questions, concerns into those three categories. Definitely presented this stuff. And then at the end, if you look at slide six, it's pretty much just, here's what things are gonna happen, here's how they're going to happen. And we pretty much, this is our guiding baseline of when, when we share out information. And, you know, in January, we are right on target as far as we're communicating with them on their tenants, basically, somewhere that we're going to review, what the placements are, so they know what building they're gonna go to. And just last week, we shared another survey with them of any other questions or concerns. Just anything that's kind of open-ended, share what you have. And nineteen people responded out of our hundred and twenty staff members that we have. And of those nineteen, fifteen of them said, no, I have no concerns. Like very, thank you for the communication. And if there were concerns, it's more like, how are we gonna trans, you know, maybe the scheduling issue, the kids blocking the club, or maybe the noise. Or just how the music rooms are gonna be used in the cafeteria. So very legitimate concerns, but not concerns of why would we have any, how are we doing this? We feel like we're very narrow in our communication. And it's also been nice because we have twelve people on this committee representing all three schools, and Jenny Hoyt represents the district as a staff member. So they have a voice in this, it's really great to go back out and share, so it's not just us telling them, it's also that shared communication. Helps the transition anxiety. So I was talking about goal three. There are no questions about goal two. And we are talking about the operational excellence, which is basically collaborating on efficient practices of long-term district success. And one of the things that we continue to do is that professional learning time for staff to work together, to collaborate together, to talk about data, to talk about professional practice. And we really capitalized on, we've seen our monthly starts that are on a daily, as well as every trimester, we give the teachers a half a day to work with their grade level teams, so they can kind of stay up to date on where they are with their curriculum, teaching, learning standards, and student learning objectives by grade level, as well as the content area. And then, as Dr. Rogers mentioned earlier, the constructional leadership team, as well as the dual language leadership team meet with Dr. Draca, and they go over how it is. We have a comprehensive theory glance, so by building principal as well as by department, we have started this year a month-by-month to-do list. Just, if anybody were to walk out, if someone walked in with issues, it's gonna be pivotal as far as the transition with Mr. Wolford is, what happens on July one at West Oak Middle School from a principal's perspective? And then run that list, going through month by month of your items to do, the projects to do, what are things done as a district, what are things done, you know, by building or department? So we're all in the process of creating that, from my office all the way down to special ed, as well as, like I said, the buildings, buildings and grounds, technology, finances, so we're all working on those as we speak, and then how we're doing at the end of this school year. And then, again, something that's embedded throughout the entire whole prairie is the reorganization plan. So I shared with you a little bit of the previous PowerPoint, the timeline that we've used, you know, the purpose of timeline, the action steps, the communication plan. So in January, we presented everybody with the staff segments and the location. Just today, put together what we're gonna be sharing, or actually, I should say, in February, the last late start, the teachers actually went to visit their different rooms, and there's an inventory sheet that they're completing of their new spaces and items that they need, and items that they wish this, items that they're taking about. In March, at the March eighth institute day, we are going to spend the morning talking with our routine configuration, it's something where we work with our principals, and then we're gonna go over all the moving details with them, and talk about how they want to set up their building, culture, and climate, and opportunities if they wanna do, do some team building. People in May could have a parent presentation and give information about what are the projects that are going to be done. And then May, June, prepare for construction. And if you could flip on that transition plan, this has been shared with the staff. In January, basically, this is all information you see, but just the, the idea of presenting to the staff is just where the projects are done, you know, the map of DLS, the map of West Oak Middle School. And then we presented this to them before the late start in February, of just what that's all like, where are we visiting the room? Here's the time that you can have to visit the room, like in the appreciated, you know, having that open house, I'm sure, and see where they're gonna be learning, living, and teaching next year. If your neighbors are gonna be, you access, they have to be on this, to that one, so just, just. And then last, we, we are in the project, or excuse me, the process of those, the start, so we're looking at by where's the teaching plan, the new reorganization and inclusion, and how that's gonna work, so we're putting together plans for starting a new strategic plan, do we keep the same mission, do we keep the same mandate, do we keep the same goal? All the things, operations that we need to be doing, that those discussions will be in, in summer, just in the team.
You know, I have to believe that self-service is, but they might also provide material.
All right, goal four is about financial excellence. And our first goal is a kind of continuation from last year. It's our year-two referendum facility plan goals. And so we approved the bids at a last board meeting, and we were about a half million dollars under budget. And with our summer planning, we still had some in the reserves, depending how bids went. Right now, we're about a million dollars left in our referendum, as long as everything goes to plan and the summers work. So that will flow directly to target two, is developing our five-year facility plan. So with that million dollars that we still have left open in the referendum, and any local funds that we're gonna be budgeting, that's gonna be where we really fine-tune our plan and focus on our most critical improvements over the next five years in our architect. And facility partners are helping us out prioritize, and that's something that we'll present to you over the summer. And last is really just about our district financial information. We're still trying to utilize resources to present our information the most transparent way possible. And one of it is using our subscription to Forecast Five. So they did a really good job at allowing us to present our budget story and really present information we think shows us a good financial light. So updated the dashboard page that we have that has embedded PDF that shows where we are budgeted actual each year, and what, what funds trend up and down in a positive way, what are surpluses trending over the last few years. So I think it's a good bit of information to show the public that we are really using metrics on our side to evaluate where we are at a financial position year to year, and different areas we mentioned trend before it gets out of whack and, and budgeting accordingly. That's something that I'll be editing probably twice a year as, as we get more information available.
And our last goal, goal five, excellence communications. We have, we continue to focus on three targets. First, communicating individual student and class progress to parents in a frequent and consistent basis. Whether you're at Fairhaven or Diamond Lake School, there are weekly updates that are being sent home. Who's switching next or something? All right, much better, all right. Where updates are being sent home to families via handout, paper documents sent home, sharing what is being done, how is it being done, and what will be done next. Via teacher classroom weekly progress updates, as well focusing on academics and behavior. But on top of that, being able to share digitally via Google, I'm sorry, ClassDojo, Seesaw, and Google Classroom. When, when weekly updates being sent home, I'm sorry, monthly updates from the middle school perspective, we have monthly newsletters that are posted on grade level pages, academic progress available on Power School. progress available on Power School Parent Portal, as well as our teachers sharing classroom updates using Google Classroom. Additionally, from the middle school perspective, the stat, West Oak Middle School is also sharing prior reports sent home on a monthly basis. Communication-relevant information for all stakeholders through school and district electronic communications. I'm picking up a lot of things, there must have too much technology around me right now, so I sound very robotic, it's throwing me off here. Anyway, so one thing we've been, we've added this year is moving to continuing our mass communication services using School Messenger. So all of our stakeholders, our families and our staff are getting communications via phone, email, text blasts, consistent on a meaningful basis, where we are also sharing a new thing we've been utilizing this January, which is instead of receiving weekly updates from all individual schools, every, every January, I'm sorry, every Friday we send home, one consistent email done midday, where it has a dashboard of buttons that take you to each individual school weekly update. It's very visually appealing and welcoming to be able to view all the resources that are there on a weekly basis. And those lead to, updates are always posted on the website, so whether you're getting it via email or via the website, you're getting those weekly updates. We continue to share our story on social media. We have a continued, every monthly, I share our analytics on, we're our presences on social media. And we continue to post on a daily basis on all platforms, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube, to share from a perspective of events that are happening or stories that are happening in classrooms. Last but not least, our third target, communication of district transition and reorganization plan and the process in a transparent manner. If you look at the two hyperlinks we have shared here, we have our facility improvement page, which is shared on our district website underneath Parents and Community. Here, we share any update that's happening, whether it's a presentation at the board meetings, or any update that's happening, such as our improvement timeline, a renovation gallery of all the images of displaying all the improvements that are happening district-wide, as well as the financial impacts regarding our facility updates. And then, our last item would be our staff intranet, where we, we've discussed and shared about our new beginnings committee. And on our staff intranet, we share a whole section talking about sharing the agendas from the new beginnings committee, presentations, as well as a timeline.
Okay. Thanks. Other things here? Can I ask?
Please.
When you consolidated the email to just one email?
Yes.
Do you have, through metrics, like, is that still reaching the same amount of people? Is it, are working, willing, and information?
I get a summary report every, every time I send out anything, whether it's through that or through any other resources, like the PTO blast I send out as well. So I can review that and actually see the difference, or actually ensure that during a monthly, to be honest with you, to show how many people are receiving it. And we are reviewing all the people that have access and who haven't. And we've even coordinated with our office staff on any families that are not receiving it, making sure that that information's updated in Power School.
That's great. Thanks.
So just to summarize what we've been talking about tonight, when we give these presentations to people, we're always in the same five goal areas. We want to have excellence in our academic areas, professional areas, operations, finance, communication, those aren't going to change. What do change are the targets. And the targets are based on these nine focal priorities that you see here. Basically, this is everything that we do from academics to culture, all the way down to physical responsibility, that drive our targets each and every year. So they might look a little different because of the areas we're attacking or events going on, like this reorganization of the district. At some point, this will be over, you know, then we'll move on to the next thing. So we will continue to use these nine points to drive our targets forward.
Maybe just that, or did this?
Oh, go ahead.
I was just saying, we just all go all together, and feel like this is something that is driven by the leadership team, you know, what we do every single day that I think drives our work, and I think these are the nine principles that drive our work, around the goals and It's a lot. There's a lot here. A lot of work. It's really interesting. I would be very proud for anyone to. Still a lot of work to be done here. Consolidation, right?
Yeah.
Because I feel like the team is already involved in the work, and the staff is ready, they're excited about it, everyone's really not looking forward to it, they're excited by it, they're looking forward to the changes, the policies that we've looked, and I think the community's very supportive. Are there any other things? Is there a question? Several of the candidates come in, you know, in their West Oak principal position, and during those conversations, you know, we asked them, you know, what do you know about district settings, and what attracted you to be here? And they said, well, what you're doing, a lot of them said, what you're doing with the facilities is done. And we've been watching that website, and researching it, so I feel like the information there, we're excited about that, if we're just, like you said, somebody outside. I feel like we've given them enough information to the people that want to, want to stay involved, or can know what's on your mind. Any comments, questions, Mr. Hoppman?
Nothing yet.
Okay. All right, thank you for the, for the presentation. Lot of progress.
No questions.
All right, next up is our business agenda. These are items that we have discussed in previous meetings, or and or will be discussing this evening. First item up is our alpinist boat agenda. Items under the alpinist boat agenda are exit routine and or non-commercial, and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board members, staff, administrator, or superintendent, have a separate point on any item or items, that item or items will be included in the alpinist boat agenda and those on the separate. We resolved that Diamond Lake seventy-sixth Board of Education accepts and approves the alpinist boat agenda, items eight of each asked and listed. How many questions on this item? Do you have a motion to approve?
Hale?
Yes.
Cassel? Yes. Candela, yes. Walker? Yes.
Next item has to do with transportation bid. All right, so this one is, we resolved that Diamond Lake seventy-sixth Board of Education accepts the bid for Lakeside Transportation for regular and special education transportation at a projected annual cost of six hundred fifty-three thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars for regular, and three hundred twenty-two thousand fifty-seven dollars for special ed for the nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, and a four percent increase each year thereafter for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school years. Comments or questions on this item?
Yeah, how does that compare to Durham's? So, how did Lakeside's bid compare to Durham's? If you look at, there's attachment that says, final bid tabulation worksheet. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if it's exactly on. Bids came in pretty close, so for instance, the shared route rate for Lakeside was one sixty-five a day, and the shared rate was one sixty-nine, sixty-six for Durham, so they're four dollars and something said. Difference, the big difference was the special ed transportation, that's where Lakeside came in significantly lower. So it was about one seventy-five a day for, that is, in-district routes compared to two twenty, one nineteen, so it was like a forty-dollar difference. And that's what really our, our biggest fluctuation comes in, is special ed transportation. Most of the time, we're caving kids, or taking them out of district, and things like that, so. I'm sorry, I gotta get here. Oh, yeah, so, you know, the biggest impression that Lakeside left on me was when we went to the process of bidding, they took a look at our routes, they have a guy who works at, we used to work at First Train, which is the routing software most major companies use. He took a look at it and said, hey, you're using fourteen buses, when we can change your times a couple minutes and go to ten buses. So it saved us a hundred thousand dollars just for that, that change alone. And it was a change that the, you know, our company suggested, rather than pocketing that extra money and doing something more inefficiently, so. Like, do they actually make use of it? They, they take a look at our routes and recommend things, rather than the other way around. So all in all, they were very impressive, their communication levels, and just their willingness to work with us. It was a weird process, because we had to kind of solicit bidders, and we were to reach out and try to get as many bids as we could. In fact, we only had two bids, but very happy with Lakeside's proposal and their just general demeanor towards our transportation. I guess I said one other, well, I think that was a better comment or thought, but you know, one of my frustrations with Durham was that while they had the technology to make some of the suggestions for transportation, they never really, at least it felt to me, they never really stepped into the planes to do any of that stuff. And in my opinion, it's almost more of it, it was a little bit more expensive to go and, I mean, can actually be a partner to the district? Yeah. It's much more of a transactional relationship, so. Nothing was more evident than last year, when we signed a one-year renewal, and they made it known that, you know, they're going to get some of their money back from the previous contract, but, you know, I will point out that Durham did propose an alternate bid, that they removed all the penalties for late busing, and things like that. That's something that we all collectively is free interest, we're not in favor of, so. Yeah, it's been a good process, though.
Question about the shared process. So, all three ended up on the same side, but that wasn't necessarily, that wasn't a condition of the process, right? It could have been.
Correct. Traditionally, when you share, there's a shared rate and an unshared rate, and the shared rate's almost half the non-shared rate. So if seventy-five and one-twenty traditionally had a relationship where their buses align in such a way that they'll, bus driver will pick up the kids at seventy-five, drop them off, pick up the kids at one-twenty, drop them off, and they get this shared rate. We benefit in the fact that we share with ourselves. So since next year, it's going to function that one school is going to pick up Diamond Lake, West Oak Intermediate, West Oak Middle School. So just one bus is going to pick up all three schools, and we get to take advantage of the shared route price as well, because we're sharing with ourselves. So we didn't necessarily need to go with a different company.
Was there, and what benefits any see for doing that shared process, shared fee process? Given that you've got, got their shared rate by sharing with ourselves?
Yeah, I think it just passed history. There's been some benefit of packaging our district as a whole, rather than moving in an operation, only getting one district that made a million-dollar contract, whereas they could actually focus their efforts, build a new bus barn if they need to, and then focus it on, you know, a four-and-a-half-million-dollar contract. So it's not so much as savings, it's, it made us a little bit more attractive, and you guys have been around here long enough to know that of the past two bids, we have only gotten one bid from Durham, because nobody wanted to move in and take advantage of our operations here. But it, it's really, we went out to bid early, we would have went out to bid three or four times if we didn't get, you know, favorable results. In fact, we got in early, got advantage of four, more than some contracts.
Were you doing partnership with two other districts based on that?
Yes, the biggest problem that the transportation companies say is the lack of drivers. So we've made it known that if they're going to be our partner, we're going to be a partner with them, we'll advertise, you know, for district drivers and our, some of our families, maybe back to school events and things like that. So we've already got a real close relationship, I think, and want to help each other out and help us succeed.
Other questions on this item? Do you have questions to approve?
Cassel? Hale? Fordo? Hoplin? Candela, yes. Walker? Yes.
The next item is our personal meeting. It was on Diamond Lake seventy-sixth Board of Education, that's the question about IS and the agenda. This is two of the desires. How many questions on this item? I think we used to have something on, or the chief of district track.
They're from Moonlight High School.
High School, okay.
We're still talking.
No, that's okay, I just wanted them to know the reason why we're bringing, we normally don't put extra peripher, person on top.
Correct. And the one, if I may, the one that's attached, named Florida's a Jewish, and, and, and Pat.
All right, questions and comments? Do you have questions to approve?
Second. Mella, yes. Cassel, yes. Fordo? Hale?
Yes.
Hoplin? Walker? Yes.
The next item has to do with approval of request policies. Whereas policy creation and updates and changes to adopt the policies on the right of district seventy-sixth, we do a subscription, subscription to the policy reference education subscription to the citizens and residents. From the Illinois Association of Schoolboys. And whereas the policy committee is reviewing the policy, we have a first meeting of the policy, called AD, that February fifth, two thousand nineteen, Board of Board meeting. Therefore, we resolve that Diamond Lake seventy-sixth Board of Education uses to approve a policy change as presented in IAS, published in nineteen ninety-nine. How many are questions on this large item? Do you have any questions to approve?
Nope. Yes. Fordo? Hoplin? Cassel? Yes. Candela, yes. Walker?
Side of this group with decent information minutes. The motion to approve all of the whole session minutes on board, which is held until July two thousand eighteen, January seventy, two thousand eighteen. We list the exempt minutes for July seventeen, August seventh, September ninth, first of the fourth, October second, October sixteen, November thirteen, November seventh, and twenty eighteen. How many are questions on this item? Do you have any questions?
Cassel? Yes. Hale?
Yes.
Fordo? Hoplin? Candela, yes. Walker? Yes.
That concludes our business agenda, and we have this closing session. Do you have support or objections, please? Do you have some more instructions? I, I hope to get to have a comment. I don't think there's a question. I think it's in there somewhere, I think it should be in March. March thirteenth. Yeah, so that is where we, where we, 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 we. I don't know if they're looking at that.
Good, all right. It's time to leave the workshop on this side.
This is one. I don't know if you think the difference between the board and the organization. So also, did you know, just have to, you know, whether or not I believe that this is carrying every word Okay. Next up, through the information part, we have two. Next up, it goes to the This time, we open the floor for any other public comments. Do we have any others? Yep. All right, at this time, the board is going to return to the second session for the appointment of a publication supporting the quality of the system. This year, the boys and the district boys announced previously, including their testimony on the class of this employee or against the law. And collective bargaining for collective, about any matter, district employees or their representatives, or celebrations concerning talent sketches for one of the classes. Do we have a motion to return to the second session?
Castle? Yes. Well, yes. Or no? Hale?
Yes.
Hoffman? Walker? Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.